About five after seven, I'd like to call the meeting to order if everybody would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All board members are in attendance this evening except Mr. Boglioli. Before we move forward with the agenda for this evening, does anybody have any announcements?
I do. Dawn and I attended a really interesting advocacy program put on by the Erie County Association of School Boards this past Saturday morning. There were representatives from a number of school districts. We heard from board members, parents, even students, and it was a really great program. One of our esteemed residents, Vic Martucci, talked about, you know, how to use the lobbyists, and it was very interesting. So I appreciate that and hopefully we'll bring some advice back when the time comes.
Alright, thank you. Anything else? Before us, we have the agenda for this evening. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
On the commission.
Second, Dawn, do they?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. In our packets, we have the meeting minutes from both the regular session as well as the executive board session on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. If no questions, can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. We have no correspondence this evening. At this point in the agenda, we have the first of two public comment sessions. Again, I think we have two microphones that will be active. You'll state your name and address before addressing the board. Again, we have one now before the students speak, and then we have one later after the student presentation. If anybody would like to speak now, or we can address anything in a few moments. Okay. Alright, thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, so Dr. Hicks, superintendents report.
Thank you. I want to introduce our new athletic director, Jason Lembeck, and he's going to make comments about the girls' golf season, which was extraordinarily successful. Jason.
Good evening, everyone. I am very, very excited to be here to recognize a truly significant accomplishment by these lovely ladies. If you guys would join me and stand here, I'm going to let Coach Grasha introduce you in a minute, but before I do that, I want to share with you what they have done. So this year, they had an undefeated season, ten and oh, but it goes a lot farther than that. They have actually had ten undefeated seasons. So this year marked their hundredth win in a row, and I honestly don't know if any -- yes, absolutely. I honestly don't know of any sport or any team in this area that has accomplished such a thing. So we are so proud of this significant accomplishment, and we do have some certificates to give to the girls here, but I wanted to let Coach Grasha kind of introduce her girls.
Thank you, and thanks Superintendent Hicks and the rest of the board for recognizing the girls and their accomplishments. So I have four of our team of nine, and these are four out of the five young ladies who have qualified for sectionals. As Mr. Lembeck said, the girls have gone undefeated for ten consecutive seasons since the inception of the girls' golf team back in two thousand and ten, and to capture a hundred consecutive undefeated wins is just an amazing accomplishment, and many kudos to the girls. So we have in alphabetical order here, we have Alyssa Bolero. She's a junior, and she'll make her third appearance at sectionals. We have Rosalie De Nundio, who's a ninth grader. She'll make her second appearance. Victoria Leach is one of our sophomores. She can make it tonight, but she'll also make her third appearance at sectionals. We have Annika Michelle. She's a sophomore. She'll make her second appearance at sectionals. And Emily Morelli is a ninth grader, right? And you'll make your second appearance as well. Two years ago, Section Six implemented the Section Six Team Championship, and our girls have captured it for the last two years, and they are hoping to three-peat this year. All five girls are hoping to qualify, not only individually, for states to compete in June, but also to capture that title again and represent Section Six in Clarence for the state team title. The last two years, they came in second place. Last year, it wasn't by very much, and they're hoping to capture that title this year. So, so thanks, everybody. Thank you again. Girls, congratulations.
And I really like the cool pullovers that you have. Can always get one of those for your superintendent if you're inclined. Okay. Next on our agenda, Mrs. Arroyo and the students of Sheridan Hill will provide a presentation on building leadership. Mrs. Arroyo, you and your kids are on.
My name is Ayesha Ganga.
Hello, I am Jay Golinski. You may have noticed some new things as you walk through Sheridan Hill this year. At our front doors, you may have noticed a sign that says Sheridan Hill, School of Leaders.
That is because this year at Sheridan Hill, we are focused on growing as leaders and being in charge of our learning.
There are many leadership opportunities for students here at Sheridan Hill. Our fifth graders have always had morning announcements on screen, but this year, students are even taking over behind the scenes with the filming and producing.
In our classes, we have many leadership roles, too. My class actually takes charge of recycling bottles and cans around the building. Mrs. Klinger Smith's and Mrs. Hakolski's classes also lead paper recycling for all the offices.
This year, a special opportunity we have is being able to take part in leading building tours.
We gave a building tour to Chinese visiting teachers.
We prepared for leading tours by meeting with Ms. Dico. We ran a -- we went around the whole school and thought of things we wanted to say and talk about. I liked pointing out the gymnasium in our P.E. schedule and what we do in class.
My favorite part of the building was showing them the nurse's office and when and why kids would go there. The Chinese teachers were happy to have us give them a tour.
They even gave us a thank you gift.
Now, Mrs. Arroyo has offered us a chance to give tours to new families and students who come to school here.
This is a fun way to show off our school and get them excited and comfortable before they start. Knowing it is a safe place will make them feel welcome.
I am proud of myself for being given this opportunity.
I am honored to have this chance to show off our school.
This year at Sheridan Hill, classes are buddied up to build a community. My name is Christina Rivera, and I am from Ms. Wallhoff's fourth grade class.
And I am Annabella Carrillo from Ms. Crane's second grade class.
As a buddy class, we spend time together. One activity we did was create, decorate, and color bookmarks. Many buddy classes even read together during star reading time. I know I made a friendship, but with someone outside of class when we made bookmarks.
During leadership gatherings and assemblies, buddy classes sit together, too. This helps kids get to know others and build positive friendships. Kids also help lead by example with assembly behavior.
Every month, we meet together as a school to have leadership gatherings.
So far this year, we have talked about what it means to be a leader, what a habit is, and just this month, we were able to help introduce being proactive.
Being proactive means taking charge of yourself. Students in Ms. Wallhoff and Ms. Crane's class practice set us get to help show what happens when you aren't proactive. I felt happy to be a part of something special for the school.
I was happy to know that I could show the school what it means to be proactive by being part of the script.
Hi, my name is Julia Jobs.
And I'm Tracy Wu, and we are the fifth graders from Mrs. Esposito's class. At Sheridan Hill, one of the habits we have learned is to be proactive. This means I'm in charge of myself and my choices. At school, there are places to go and tools to use to help each student be in charge of their bodies.
We were able to highlight one of these strategies with a project recently. This year, each fifth grade is working with our librarian, Mrs. Harris, on enrichment projects. We noticed some big colorful stickers on the floor and walls and wanted to learn more and tell the school about them.
In two hallways in the building, there are sensory paths. A sensory path is a tool used to help a student ease their body. Kids travel through these paths to calm their bodies and help to refocus if they are having difficulties in class.
We worked to create a video to share with students at Sheridan Hill how to use the sensory paths. First, we had to interview Mrs. Arroyo, who put the stickers down, how to do each step. We also took notes to help us when filming. Then we filmed each other doing each step. Next, we wrote down a script for the video. We included important things everyone should know. Mrs. Harris helped us edit the video, so it looked great.
Making the video was a great opportunity to be a leader for Sheridan Hill. It helped build self-confidence in front of a camera, and it felt good to know we were helping people.
We hope you enjoy the video and learn how to use the sensory path from it.
Be sure to take a look in the P.E. and primary hallways to see the paths.
Welcome to our sensory path video made by the fifth graders from Mrs. Esposito's class. The name of the video is "The Sensory Path Video" and the path is in the video. Drop them a little bit like a frog. Push on the wall. You may need to squat and own steps. Tiptoe on the red stars. Three-time jumping jacks inside the green box facing the wall. And on some of the lines, don't fall off. Keep calm and take good breaths. The sensory path was made so kids can focus and get their little... First, you tinkle across the green leaves. Then hop on the blue raincoat with two feet. Next, hop with two feet from cloud to cloud. Then pick colors shown on the rainbow and bounce and walk across it. Now line up your hands and feet, the stickers on the wall and floor, and push against the wall as you move to the next set of hands and feet stickers. Lastly, bounce on the long logs and spin on the circular pieces of wood once or twice. Then hop scuffs across the rocks anywhere you want. Please have adult permission and use the sensory path properly. We hope the sensory path in this video helps you get back on track.
It feels great to be recognized when we show off our leadership skills here at Sheridan Hill. My name is Taylor Clock, and I am from Mr. Miller's third grade class.
And my name is Alex Clock, and I am from Mrs. Butter's first grade class. This year at Sheridan Hill, we have Trophy High Tuesday. This happens once a week when students are recognized for doing great things and teachers notice. The coolest thing is kids are being leaders without anyone telling them to. Some kids get recognized for cleaning up trash, making someone smile, or helping another student.
Last week, I received a Trophy High Tuesday award for helping out in class. During our unit on geography, Mr. Miller noticed that I showed a great deal of initiative and effort when I created a PowerPoint presentation about landforms. He said my presentation to the class helped him have a much better understanding of landforms.
This year, I got Trophy High Tuesday award, too. My teacher noted I always saw my friends know how proud I am of their hard work. Even when the work is tough and I see they want to give up, she said she sees that I love to lift up my friends without even thinking about it. She said I helped to motivate, and I am a great boy.
It makes me feel happy, excited, and proud of myself when I get noticed for the hard work I did.
I felt so happy my name was on the announcement. It was so great, and I was so proud of myself.
We hope you enjoyed learning about all the different leadership skills we are using in our building at Sheridan Hill. Thank you.
Your kids were fantastic. What we will do is just pause slightly to allow the elementary kids and their parents to get them home for bedtime. And our golf girls, you can go to bed, too. Next item in the superintendent's report is our annual report of accountability data. Mrs. Overholt, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Tonight, I will provide to the Board of Education an overview of the student performance on the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen New York State E.L.A. and mathematics assessments. Just to begin, I first wanted to provide kind of a regional view of the performance of the following ten districts, along with Clarence, looking at levels of proficiency across the region. So when we look at the region, again, comparing Clarence to the top performing districts within Western New York, you can see that Clarence reaches the highest level of proficiency at sixty-nine percent for grades three through eight on all the E.L.A. assessments. The same holds true for mathematics. Again, regionally, looking across the eleven districts, Clarence outperforms with seventy-two percent of students in grades three through eight, reaching proficiency. When we take a look at proficiency across the four elementary levels, again, we range from sixty-three percent. Again, proficiency is level three or four on the assessment. We range from sixty-three percent to seventy-seven percent. When we take the average here, the overall proficiency is sixty-nine percent for students in grades three through five. When we take a look at mastery, mastery is level fours. We can see that we have a bit of a range and a little bit of a fluctuation. Now, with the level four, this would mean that the student is performing at or above the ninetieth percentile within the state. When we take a look at math performance in grades three through five, we see we range between seventy-eight percent and eighty-seven percent. Again, not only are we performing in the region, highest among the region, but when we start looking at the state, we're also amongst the highest districts performance-wise in New York State as well. And levels of mastery in grades three through five, again, when we take the average here, we see we're at about fifty percent. So of those students who are scoring proficiency, about fifty percent of those students are scoring a level four on the assessment. And for mathematics, this again would mean that the students are performing at or above the ninetieth percentile. So when we look across the district, again, this is viewing grades three through eight, specifically on the E.L.A., we're seeing that we're right around that seventy, seventy percent proficiency at all grade levels. And four percent mastery, again, we see a little bit of a fluctuation with mastery of the level fours. Specifically, looking at grades three, we see a bit of a dip, and we see a bit of a jump at grade six. This, when we looked at performance regionally, we saw similar trends across other districts at those grade levels. But again, looking at grades four, five, seven, and eight, then taking that kind of average, we see our students are right about that thirty percent for mastery. When we look at mathematics, we see a little bit of a different pattern. When we look three through six, we're averaging right around that eighty percent, eighty percent four proficiency. We see a bit of a drop here in grades seven and eight. We do have, at those grade levels, the highest number of refusal rates. For grade seven specifically, approximately twenty-seven percent of students did not take the assessment in that grade level. For grade eight, we have about thirty-two percent of the students at grade eight taking algebra. So those students are not included in this population. Also at grade eight, we had approximately thirty percent of the students who took math eight refuse to take the assessment. So we're missing quite a bit of the population. And again, for mastery, we see a similar pattern or a similar trend as we did with proficiency rates. Again, what is interesting when we look at mastery when compared to proficiency, at grade levels three through seven, fifty percent of the students who were proficient did score a level four. So fifty percent of our students are reaching mastery. When we take a look at the trend data, this is four-year trend data, there doesn't appear to be, there's a bit of a dip in third grade specifically. We're looking at third grade here from two thousand and eighteen to nineteen. And again, similar trends, we saw this across the region in terms of districts' performance. But this actually could just be a small number of students that changes the percentages of proficiency. The interesting pattern that emerges at all grade levels is the performance that we see in years two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen compared to two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. We see that we have a bit of an increase in improvement when we look across the four years. The same holds true when we look at grade four E.L.A. We see a similar pattern that we, again, go from approximately sixty percent proficiency in those two grade, in those two years, rather, to mid-level seventies, mid-seventies for level of proficiency. Not as big of a jump in grade five, again, maintaining that level of proficiency, right around the sixty percent mark for grade five. Grade six, we see again a bit of that jump from sixty percent in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, to around seventy percent for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. Again, in seventh grade, refusal numbers, again, kind of playing into this again because we do have, as I said, approximately twenty-seven percent of the students not taking the assessment at that grade level. So we see kind of, again, a similar trend across the four years, and a little bit of a jump, again, for grade eight from sixteen, seventeen to eighteen, nineteen. When we look at the trends for math, again, looking from grades three to eight, we do see similar patterns. When we look at the seventeen, sixteen, seventeen performance compared to eighteen, nineteen performance, again, moving up, starting in grade three, we still are averaging around that eighty, eighty-three percent proficient. Again, we see the same performance at grade four, about eighty, eighty-two percent proficient when we average those two years. Improvement again from those two cohorts here in sixteen, seventeen to the two cohorts in eighteen, nineteen. There's grade six math, again, right around that seventy-two, seventy-three percent proficiency. We see a bit of a dip from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen for grade seven. And again, for grade eight, we had a bit of a jump. And again, as I had mentioned before, we are looking at approximately forty percent of the entire eighth grade population here because thirty percent of the students who are in eighth grade do not take this assessment. They're taking the algebra regents exam. And then for that population of students who would take this assessment, thirty percent of them refuse to take the test. When we look at the four-year trends for grade four science, again, we have been at about ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent proficient over the last four years. And grade eight science, this past year, two thousand and nineteen, ninety percent of the students scored proficiency. Like with algebra, we have a population at eighth grade that takes earth science. Last year, fifty-two percent of the eighth graders took earth science, so they did not sit for the grade eight exam or assessment. So that, again, that population of students who took earth science is not included in this metric. So again, looking at our next steps, you know, in terms of performance, we are looking at the instructional reports that are shared with the district through our data warehouse. We continue to examine those reports and isolate and prioritize the standards where we see we need improvement. We meet on a regular basis with our curriculum leaders within the district. We have had a number of meetings already this year, looking at last year's performance, and already talking about instructional and curricular changes that are being made this year, again, in preparation for the upcoming assessments in the spring. And that's all I have this evening, so at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Just maybe provide some context. In the past, in various state testing settings, I'll call it, the availability of information and the level of information that's provided back to the districts to review and study and effectively improve curriculum moving forward. How is the state with that today relative to these assessments?
We get a, we have a tremendous amount of data that is shared with the district in terms of being able to analyze performance. One of the challenges is that the tests are held secure, which certainly poses a challenge when it comes to analysis or complete analysis, because a good portion of the assessments are still not available to us. So we do the best we can with what we are given, and we are given a lot, and we do, we do a great job of getting that information back to principals and teachers so they can analyze that information as well.
Thank you.
So in the past, when we were working with refusals on the tests, I mean, are those cohorts kind of working themselves up through the grades, or are you still seeing kind of persistent patterns? Like, it seems like we're at seven and eight. Do we expect that some of the refusals that were historically at seven, they're not going to be there next year?
They still will be there, but we are trending downwards. So in terms of looking at, you know, the past four years, we are seeing a decrease, certainly in the overall number of refusals at three through eight. The trend still is, elementary is lower than the middle school. But overall, the numbers are trending downward. That information is just not public yet, so I can't share the exact numbers.
Any other questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen. Excellent job, as always. That concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Okay, that moves us on into the finance section. Mr. Mancruso?
Sure, there's only a couple of things tonight. I did want to make note in the cover note, one of the items, talk mentions Lancaster, further down it says Newstead. They should both be Lancaster. It was just an anomaly this year. Lancaster's equalization rate dropped quite a bit, and that threw the tax rate for just that portion of the district much higher. But again, it's all based on true value, so Clarence, Amherst might be right at that hundred percent. So it's the assessed value of your home, and the tax rate compensates for it.
Do we have any information from Lancaster about the assessment process there? I mean, typically, this happens when they're just like way behind on assessments. Is there, is there any plan to change that?
I don't know if they have a plan or not. Also, the, you know, a couple of towns are lower, but as long as they maintain that level, then you won't see fluctuations. Next item that we have would be approving the chairperson for the election, or I'm sorry, for the vote and for the inspectors of election. So we have our Capitol Project Vote, December third. High school gymnasium, seven in the morning till nine at night. Marla Weiss, who was also the chairperson at our May election, will recommend that she be the chairperson for this election. And we have our list of vote inspectors. And we have our list of vote inspectors. I do want to mention the second last one, Zhang, that would be out. And I do want to add in Mark Taylor. Mark is a already certified through Erie County as a vote inspector, so he'll help us quite a bit.
Okay. I know we're obviously not expecting a same turnout we do in the May vote, but are we going to have the same setup with regards to parking spaces available and so forth?
Yes, we'll have the nearly a hundred spots right at the back of the gym, coned off for just people who want to vote. So during the day when there's a lot of people there, there'll still be those spots. In the evening, it won't be quite the same without the track needs, so there'll be a lot of spots there.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item are the transportation contracts. Earlier, I gave the board the, what they call, emergency contracts for six bus runs that we are short employees. Two of them had resigned early in the year, four of them are actually ones that we hope to get back sooner than later through medical issues. In any case, we have bid out, as required, those six bus runs. The third page in, I think, is the little spreadsheet that is important to look at. The net difference is, is only about thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars for this group. We don't want to direction from this board and prior boards, we don't want to contract our transportation department in any way, and we only want to do this when these types of runs come up and we were unable to do it with our in-house people. Many districts do that and supplement a small amount with this. We've got a hundred, almost, we've got ninety-eight buses and we're only contracting six. Last item, Nativity School is allowed under the food service guidelines to be part of our food service program. They've never asked us to do that, they've always ran their own program, whether they did it in-house or contracted it out on their own. They're running into quite a few deficits, very difficult, as you may know, just like restaurants always go in and out of business, to have food when you're only serve about fifty-some lunches a day. So the state allows us, through the process that I outlined here, to take them in, in essence, as just one of our schools. The contract with Sodexo would just be maintained, we would add Nativity. The additional meals will not be a cost increase to us. The worst that would happen is we would break out even, but we do make money each year through Sodexo, so this would be a plus to us. And it would be a plus to Nativity because they would just break out even, there'd be no funds transferring hands from the district to Nativity, it would just be like another elementary school. We would take the money in and deposit it and the lunches pay for it. It would be the same program that we have with all the nutritional standards that all of our students have to meet.
Rick, are they going to maintain the cafeteria at Nativity and so then have employees there to run it?
Yes, yes. The, there's only a couple of things that they might prepare off-site for Nativity.
Okay. And Nativity's still going to be responsible for any sort of, like, coolers or anything that they need, equipment-wise?
Yes, that's one of the things that, as equipment needs happen, like earlier in the school year, we won't be able to use the money to buy a cooler at Nativity or something, it would only just be for our public schools.
Do they pay the same lunch fee?
Everything will now be the same. Right now, they're-
Usually at private schools, the lunch is a lot more.
Yes, they're paying more now, but now it would be just under our umbrella, all the same pricing. And the pricing is K to five at our buildings because of that nature, so, you know, it will be a little bit different there, but it'll still be K to five, one price, six, seven, eight, another price.
Why would not private schools do that, though?
You know, a lot of them can run their program, and I think Nativity is just small enough that it's difficult. I don't know what St. Greg's does, but they're a much, much bigger school, they may be able to handle the program.
If no other-
I have a question. Have we heard anything back from BOCs in regards to out of district runs?
No, they're still working on it. They hope to try to have something in place for next school year.
Any other questions for Mr. Mancruso? All right, seeing none, could I get a motion to approve items F one to F five?
I can.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Mr. Michelle, instructional?
Thank you, Mr. Fuge. For you tonight, we have an amended start date for the substitute guidance counselor at Clarence Middle School, one teacher resignation, three extensions for unpaid leaves of absence, two recommendations for appointment to continue the substitutes that are in place for some of those positions, the recommendation for an appointment of a point-four reading teacher, recommendation for the approval of TCI training for some of our staff, we have one extracurricular unpaid coach for the ice hockey team, presentation compensation for teachers who facilitated the sessions during our staff development, P six is a summer curriculum project request from Mrs. Overholt, notification of tenure, this is informational only, for Alan Simpson, who is a social studies teacher at Clarence Middle School, in additions to our substitute teacher list. On the addendum in front of you is, we're hiring a special education teacher to replace that teacher that resigned, and Mrs. Overholt has also submitted mentors for the two newly-hired teachers, as well as some curriculum hours to give them a good start.
Any questions on the instructional portion of the agenda? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve P one to P nine?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional, we have four resignations, three of which are aides, one is a bus driver. P eleven adds some additional time to two of our employees based on the needs of students. There are two requests for unpaid leaves of absence and two requests for unpaid extensions of current leaves of absence. We have one return of employment for one of our bus attendants. The list of appointments that are there, pretty lengthy, to put them together, there are twelve pool monitors, two clerical positions, one teacher aide, two bus drivers, and assistant maintenance mechanic crew chief for buildings and grounds, which is a new position. We have updates to our non-instructional substitute list, and you'll see in the last page is a resolution for hearing officers for section seventy-one and seventy-three hearings. These are required by civil service, they're there for, in case that we need them, they're not something that we may necessarily need during the year, but if it does come about, they're in place.
Thank you. Any questions on items P ten to P seventeen? Seeing none, could I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Special needs and student activities-
We had seventy-one committee on special education, school age meetings over the last month, and eight preschool meetings, and these are mostly program changes.
Any questions on items S one and S two? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve those?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Okay. This evening, we have no board development or policy items to discuss, which would bring us to the second public comment session for this evening. If anybody has anything, there's a microphone on either side, if you could just state your name, address, and purpose.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nicole, and I live on Michael Douglas Drive. I am here tonight to share concern that is mounting with the presentation of Senate Bill S two nine eight B. This bill provides for the mandatory immunization of all children born after January first, two thousand nine, against a human papillomavirus, also known as HPV. For anyone who may not know, HPV is a sexually transmitted disease. Therefore, it is not communicable within the school day environment. Your much-needed partnership is coming at a critical time. As of November fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, Senate Bill S two nine eight B has been assigned a same-as bill in the Assembly. Assembly Bill A two nine one two A is an identical version of the aforementioned Senate bill. Experienced observers know that a bill with a same-as in the alternate House is an important early sign that a bill could pass both the Senate and Assembly. It indicates that individual lawmakers in each House are supportive of the bill. I am concerned that the passing of the bill will burden our school district with yet another unfunded mandate. I'm not certain of the exact cost. However, Clarence Central School District would bear the load of processing more homeschooling paperwork and supporting families through this process, including those needing home-based special education services. Furthermore, with more students potentially being de-enrolled, I wonder how that would also affect teacher employment. Many families present tonight are against these medical mandates and would be forced to homeschool their children eligible for this vaccine. Our family would continue to be one of them. If I may, please raise your hand if the passing of this bill would directly affect your family. Thank you. As a native Clarence resident, raising a family here because of my roots, an excellent school district, the passing of the religious exemption repeal bill this past June was life-changing. I regrettably needed to resign in order to honor our religious convictions. Sadly, families like mine no longer have a choice but to homeschool. Therefore, our mission now is to ensure our friends, family, and members of the community will not also lose their choice. Leveraging public education as a tool to limit parent rights is overreach. As the stewardesses and stewards of the Clarence Central Schools, I respectfully urge you to consider the many areas that will be impacted by the passing of this bill and to present these considerations to our district's Legislative Advocacy Committee for possible inclusion in our district's advocacy platform. I also urge you to voice these concerns to our local elected officials. Finally, I ask the Board of Education to consider making a resolution against the passing of these bills. As always, thank you for your consideration as well as your dedication to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Hickson Wood. My name is Mindy Salwa, I live on High Street in Clarence Center. I have been a resident all my life, and I have four kids on this side of heaven, ages thirty-five, seven, and ten. We love our schools. As a former student, teacher, and now parent in the district, I believe my kids are getting the best education possible. Opportunities in academic enrichment, remuneration, special education services, the arts, music, my husband and I intentionally planted ourselves here to receive the benefits of a Clarence education. However, new legislations being added that would require us to have our children and all children born after January two thousand nine vaccinated against the HPV virus, a sexually transmitted disease, and our kids would be denied access to public education if we refused. This is a severe breach of government power, and we are vehemently opposed. Public schools are not places where students are engaged in activities that cause the spread of HPV, so it should not be considered a public health risk to attend school. They cannot get it from sharing toilet seats, hugging, or holding hands, sharing food or utensils. While initial studies have shown Gardasil nine vaccine to be, quote, "well tolerated and safe," still many physicians have hesitated to recommend it based on its potential side effects, which raised from mild pain at the injection site, fever and fainting, to adverse events such as autoimmune and neurological disorders, anaphylaxis, and death. This is especially concerning when we realize that usually the body's immune system gets rid of the HPV infection naturally within two years. Mandating flu shots can be lumped into the agenda of outbreak control, but HPV shots cannot. There's no outbreak of cervical or penile cancer. This information makes it completely unnecessary and dangerous for our kids. The people here tonight represent good families in our district who pour into our great schools. They have all agreed that if New York State passes these amendments in January, that we would be homeschooling our kids this fall. We're not even given the choice of enrolling our kids into a private school because they would fall under this mandate as well. I can't even imagine the domino effect that would occur throughout the district if this mass exodus occurred. How many teachers might lose their jobs because of enrollment, not to mention where resources would have to be distributed in order to accommodate the larger amount of homeschooling paperwork through this unfunded mandate, all because of a vaccine we refuse to give our kids. I lost my son Ben to brain cancer five years ago. We had fully vaccinated our kids, we trusted our physicians, and we're trying to be responsible parents, but you can't tell me that this decision might have led to his diagnosis. I can't do anything about that now, but what I can do is to protect Jen, Ben's ten-year-old twin, Jack, who's scheduled to receive the HPV vaccine in the spring, a vaccine that has been shown to actually cause the various cancers they're trying to prevent. We will not allow it. We would choose to homeschool Jack rather than take the risk. Every parent should have that choice, because where there is risk, there should be a choice. We're asking your school board to send a letter to legislators communicating your disapproval of the upcoming amendments. We want our New York State legislators to know that we stand as a group in condemning this breach of power, and we maintain that families should have a choice in whether or not they choose to have their children receive the HPV vaccine. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sybil Robbins. I live at ninety-four fifteen Douglas Fair Court, and I have two children in the Clarence School District, nine and eleven, and one's at Clarence Center, absolutely loves it. And I have a letter that I'll send to you because she's too shy to read it to you guys. And my son, he's also written a letter, but I'll also send you that, and he's in the middle school. So I've come here, as other parents have, to talk about awareness to these bills. So two of the bills they've brought up are the mandatory HPV, the S two nine eight B. There's also a mandatory flu vaccination for all school-age children, S twenty-two seventy-six, vaccination of all children without parental permission, A nine seven three, and S thirty-eight ninety-nine A. There's also one that surprises a lot of people that's out there, and it's a comprehensive sexual education bill that they want to model after California's bill for sexual education. This one, I'm not going to give you the details personally of what they're doing in California because of all the young ears in the room, but I've also talked to parents about this, and they don't even know what some of the stuff is that they'd be educating the kids on. And that concerns me greatly, and they're, they're looking at teaching kids how to make sex more pleasurable at younger ages, and telling them that if you do one sexual act, it's better than doing another one because you're not going to get pregnant, as well as all the other things where people dress up. So I really want to emphasize that that's another one, and I've talked to some teachers about it, and they said they wouldn't even feel comfortable delivering that education as well. So the last bill, when it passed, we came to the board and said, hey, is there anything that you could do to help us here? Could you write the legislators, tell them that these are bad laws in place? Some of the responses that we received is, you are too late, we cannot do anything for you. We are coming here in advance because we know the school districts can help. We know that the board can help, we know that the superintendents can help. Right now, there are different boards of education, as well as superintendents, that are writing letters on our behalf on these topics. I'm also asking for a letter to bring awareness to parents on these bills. Some schools are allowing emails to be sent to all parents so that parents are aware of what is occurring in New York State legislator, legislation. There are so many bills out there that affect parental choice, and parents have no idea their rights are being taken away every single day. And it's time that they're aware, because if they're not aware, they're not in this room. They're not in this room. And I can tell you, as a parent that was forced facts, because that's what my, my ex-husband believed in doing, my children, my children's father, he is opposed to these bills. He believes that HPV is something that nobody needs to get this vaccination. And you can talk to a lot of other parents that believe in vaccination, and they will have the same response. So from the FDA point of view, this is approved. In Japan, the HPV vaccine is so bad, when it was introduced and marketed over there, they took it off of the mandate list, and it's a parental choice over there. There was considerable amount of adverse events and deaths that occurred from this bill. Right now, in VAERS, the vaccine adverse event reactions, there's over five hundred deaths associated with HPV. You can go on the internet and search the injuries, you can see where children have committed suicide after injury because they can- You can see where children have committed suicide after injury because they can no longer have the life they had beforehand. With the flu, the flu is a joke. The bill, actually, the vaccine itself is a joke. Last year, the CDC published, and these are on minutes that I can provide to you, the effectiveness of the flu vaccine at the beginning of the Flu 7 was 38% for the strains that they actually make the flu for, which is three or four. They choose what they believe is going to be in the U.S. every year. Thirty-eight percent is a high year for the effectiveness of the vaccine. And at the end of the flu season, because the viruses mutate substantially over the course of the season, the flu vaccine was 9% effective. Who in their right mind is going to risk their life and be one of the people that die from the flu vaccine or receive over the 100,000 adverse events that are logged in the VAERS adverse event data reporting area? The third bill that I mentioned, the vaccines without parental permission, this one is one that they're poised to have go through as well. And right now, in New York City, they have job descriptions written, and these job positions are posted. So they are planning on going through with this. So I know personally, if my kids are getting a vaccination, what they're not telling you on the vaccine information sheet when you go to the doctor is the actual adverse events that can occur. If you guys at the school are giving a vaccination to my child, I don't know what to look for. I don't know why they got a big red blotch on their arm. I don't know why they won't wake up. I don't know why, whatever adverse reaction they have, I don't know what to do. If I went to the hospital, I wouldn't even know what to tell them. Yes, this child has been fine. And that would be because there's something else going on, and I wouldn't have the knowledge to say, this is what has happened. And lastly, the one, the bill on the comprehensive sexual education program, I highly suggest I'll send you some articles that have been written in California, what's going on with this. This is, should be a parental choice. This should be something that, to the extent that they want to teach children, is something you learn as an adult if you so choose to. And I don't believe that this is okay for children, and I think you'll probably get more parents either pulling your kids out of class those days because they don't believe that their children should be getting this education either. I'm asking you for two things. One, please write a letter to our legislators locally here that represent us in New York State, so our assemblyman and senator, as well as the bill sponsors, and let them know that you're not in support of these bills. They need to hear it. And secondarily, a letter to inform parents of what's going on. All parents should know what is coming down from a bill perspective and legislation. And right now, because there's three branches of government that are Democratic, and these who are the sponsors, the Democratic line, they all vote the party line, and most likely these will pass unless we all step up and tell them that we do not approve of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Angela Calisto. I live on Black Walnut Drive, and I'm not going to repeat the bill numbers that, you know, everybody's already said it, but I do want to touch on Bill S3899. You guys have to pay special attention to the verbiage in there because they're planning on removing the fact that a doctor will be giving this vaccine, and it'll make it legal for the school nurse to give the vaccine. I don't think that the school nurse is equipped nor wants to take on the adverse reactions that can happen from administering the HPV vaccine. One of the highest-rated reactions is syncope. Do you guys know what syncope is? Syncope is fainting and seizure-like activity immediately following the vaccine. I don't think that should be happening here in the middle school or in the high school. Also, it's not only just without parental consent, but it's without parental knowledge. There's something called, what is it, implicit consent? If the child has received one shot, they automatically have the consent to give them the second or the third without the parent's knowledge. These things, this is a slippery slope that these legislators are taking on with taking away our choice and our consent. These vaccines should be a discussion between the child, the child's doctor, and the parent. The school and the state have absolutely no place in this discussion for a sexually transmitted disease. As far as how I feel about the flu vaccine, well, the efficiency rates on that can speak for themselves. I would like to ask that you please send a letter home to talk to, to tell the parents about this because so many people that I come across have absolutely no idea that these are going to be up for a vote, and they're looking at the very first session when they go back in, which is, what, January 8th? Not many people are going to have a lot of time to yell and scream about this or to lobby against it unless they know what's happening now. Also, yes, please send letters to our representatives. I know Randzenhofer plans on voting against it, but the more support he has, the better. Norris, I'm not real sure about. He's not giving a straight answer. But also, reach out to the writers of the bills, and please share with other school districts. Because the other districts and the other boards and the other superintendents, they don't know what's going on either. If the parents don't know and the residents don't know, the schools don't know. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board this evening?
Hi. My name's Shannon Scholter. I'm a nurse and the mom of six children at Clarence Center. And because if this bill passes, we will be pulling all of our six children out of school and homeschooling. So I echo the statements that everyone else has made. If you guys can please write a letter on our behalf representing us and plenty more.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Caitlin Dersing. I live on 485 David Road, and I have two boys, one with special needs and one not. And, you know, I'm here in agreement with everything that everybody said, but I think something that I've been thinking about a lot in this process is, like, where does it end? Like, if my, I mean, we've chosen to vaccinate our children. I'm, you know, I chose a different plan for my baby, but I don't agree with all of them, okay? So that's my personal whatever. But where does it end? If it's in schools that we, my son can only get the special needs education that he needs so desperately. I mean, this school system for special ed is, like, amazing. I've gotten, like, the best care, and he's growing so much. I can't imagine having to take him out of that privilege just because of a medical decision that I'm making for his, that I feel is for his best interest as his mom, knowing him completely. But where does it end? You know, if we, if we start segregating these kids apart now between vaccinated and non-vaccinated, what about if I go to the grocery store? Like, can my non-vaccinated kid sit in the same grocery cart as a vaccinated kid? Or can my non-vaccinated kid go to Sweet Charlotte's and the play gym and all those wonderful places that we love? You know, like, if it's here now in the school district, what is it going to be down the road? And, like, does the government then really have the right to dictate this for us? You know, it's, vaccination is such an intimate, it's a deep issue, you know? I don't know one mom that doesn't have some sort of view on it, one way or the other. And I think there's a million right ways to parent our children, and there's a million right ways to steward their, them medically. But I just get really concerned when it starts to be a government issue. You know, the way that I parent my child and look after him, like, trust me, I bear the weight of these decisions. I, I research them. I, you know, am up all night thinking about them. What am I going to do? This isn't something that I take lightly, and I don't know any moms who do or parents who do. So I just echo the request, you know, definitely, if you can write a letter, you know, on our behalf, you know, whether you believe or not, you know, and what, I know, I have very close family that's like, I don't agree with you at all, that's okay, you know? But if you could, you know, answer the requests and the cry of our hearts, you know, as parents, that would be amazing because we love the care that we're getting here in Clarence. And I'm in this district. We did everything we could to move here just so that we could get the care here. So thank you, guys, for all you do.
Thank you.
Hi. This was--
Hi. My name is Carla. I live on Glen Iris. I have two children at Ledgeview, and I'm one of those parents that did not know anything about this. I am very upset about this, and I say that for a couple of reasons. I am a nurse. I am not against vaccinations, especially vaccinations that eradicate diseases and illnesses. I know the importance of that. What bothers me about the HPV vaccination is this. The recommendations usually start at about 11 years old up until 15. If you get it later in life, the only difference is, are two things. Number one, depending on where your children are with the sexual experience, okay? Like your typical talk we used to have in fashion, the birds and the bees. Don't we speak of that anymore? You know, so we assume these kids are going to go and do what they're going to do. That's, it's upsetting, but the difference is, if you get it later in life, you just have to get more doses of this vaccination. So to mandate a child at nine years old, not by choice, is wrong. Like everybody said, it's not an airborne disease. And if HPV was so serious, why did they change the pap smears of women to every three years? Any woman that's in here should know you don't go for pap smears every year anymore. They changed that. And pap smears is what detects HPV. There's different strains of HPV. Not all of them kill. And if we all encourage preventive care, going for our pap smears, you start your daughters at a young age. Unfortunately for boys, there's no screening for HPV. They're the carriers. They don't know they're carriers. They're working on that. I don't feel it's right that we have to be subjected to make our kids get that vaccination. That should be my, I'm a cancer survivor, and if I had breast cancer, and if they told me there was a vaccine out there, I would have done it. But with this, with my children and everything, that's, that's our upbringing. Let me talk to my children about the birds and the bees. Let me discuss with them. They're girls. I don't want them to get it either. I feel very strong about cancer, and we should all feel strong about that and being preventive about that. I just don't think it's right to make it not our decision. And I'm going to say this, abortion is a choice, and I'm not going that way, but why is this not a choice? Okay? If we can all work together about this, and I agree with informing the parents, because like I said, I go to Ledgeview, and if it wasn't for some fine women in the front row that notified me of this, I was just at swimming, I left my daughters there with my husband. I said, I gotta go. I just, Jen Jackson told me about this. I almost got a ticket coming here. That's how strong I feel. I'm not against vaccinations. I'm all for them, I promise. So I don't want to sound ignorant. But I just don't think the timing is, and what a decision. I mean, it should be our choice. And, you know, polio, the measles, the mumps, I agree with that. We eradicated all that. I mean, you know, the whole, it's just, so I just ask nicely, and if you guys can assess this and look into it and, you know, get all the information you can before you make this, before we go through with this and make it a mandate. Because I will be one of those that will pull my kids out, and we love school. My kids love school. They're doing great. This is a great district. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments this evening?
I know we're on a different subject of vaccines. I'm a terrible public speaker. My name is Jennifer. I live at 5551 Barnum Road. Two of my children are up here on my behalf as well as their behalf. We suffer in our family from autoimmune disease, and we had a medical exemption and were forced to vaccinate because medical exemptions were changed to your child must have an anaphylactic reaction or near death to have that choice of a vaccine. My kids love school. She's afraid to talk right now. I want to share what she read to you or what she wrote. They wanted to go to school. I'm in a position where I can't homeschool my kids. I feel very strongly that I'm requesting your support again to write a letter to the state, write a letter to the Board of Regents. I don't want to put them through their third and fourth series of vaccines. My daughter, and I'm going to show you guys, and she also suffered, she suffered reactions, has such a severe reaction, like I had said that she would have, on her body that she's afraid to go to school. She's dealing with emotional difficulties right now because her whole body is scarred with a rash from one of the vaccines. It's been reported to VAERS. I'm just requesting your support. I understand your predicament that you're in. I'm asking for a letter that was, I spoke about this earlier, asking for a letter to write to the Board of Regents for families that are in this predicament to request a stay for those families that are not getting a medical exemption when they truly need one. Do you guys want to say anything? Do you want to say something? You can say, say your name.
I got a question. I'm in second grade. I want to go to school and be with my teachers and my favorite. Which favorite? I'll be a kid. I don't want--
Go ahead. It's okay.
I just couldn't come to school.
You want to say anything? And lastly, Jennifer?
Yes.
And all of my kids that have received vaccines that have never received them had no indications of health conditions, and have all had severe reactions from the shots, severe headaches, skin issues. She had a rash and a high fever. They all complained of headaches right after the shots. I'm just asking that you support our decision. There's good families that care about their kids, like, we all care about our kids. We all should have the right to decide. If they're changing medical exemptions now to, you have to pretty much basically die to get a medical exemption, that's wrong. It's taking our rights away from us. My child's in a classroom and was told, when she was talking to another child about vaccines, that they shouldn't be talking about vaccines because it's not right to talk about, that it's not nice to say. She should be able to exercise her freedom of speech. And I guess I'm just looking for your support. I want to work together with you guys and ask for your kindness in writing a letter to the Board of Regents for a stay for those families that are in this situation.
Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Rot. I live on 5825 Goodrich Road, Clarence Center. I have four kids in school age right now, one in college. Thanks. All right. We've got one that we're homeschooling because of the vaccination thing, and, you know, we've got four of our kids are adopted. They, you know, they have benefited from this school system tremendously, and we appreciate it. My wife's a teacher, and, you know, there's, you know, there's nothing bad anybody can say I think about Clarence School. So the thing is, with the vaccination thing, you know, we have a particular problem with the idea of vaccinations in general, but this one in particular just seems crazy on so many levels. Now, other people have articulated the issues with it. I'm not going to give it a try. I wouldn't do so well. But I think if anybody heard what was said today, you'd understand that this is something that's not good. And in our case, the bottom line is, for us, we would be taking three more kids out of school. So I'm not sure how many others that would be the case, but I just think the impact is probably going to be pretty tremendous and not in a good way. So, and, you know, it's like the lady that spoke before me, you know, it's easy to say, well, it's doing all this good for so many people, you know, whatever. That's a typical thing with vaccinations, which is a reasonably logical argument. And I think you probably could make it for a lot of the vaccinations, but I don't think you can make it for this one. And I think those who get affected by it especially, you know, you're going to look them in the face, well, this is for the common good. I know your kids all screwed up, but that's too bad for you. You know, what about your kid? You know, how would you feel if that was your kid? Would you feel, well, explain it to them, this is for the greater good. I know this happened to you, but, you know, this is for the greater good. If it's your kid, it's a different story. If it happens to somebody else, it's just a statistic, right? So I just encourage people to, everybody-- So I just encourage people to, everybody here that is willing to, that can see the logic is to take some steps now before it is too late, because it's likely to get there if we don't do something, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Alex. I live on Westwood Road, out by Harris Hill in Maine. My wife and I just moved to Clarence about a little over a year ago. I grew up in the Clarence system, we came back because it's a good school system. My wife is a PhD, and myself, I have a couple of masters, and so we're familiar with the value that education provides to people, the opportunity it provides, especially to their families. And so in regards to this particular vaccination, we disagree after looking at what the potential consequences of the vaccine can do. And despite the benefits of school, despite the love of learning that we have in our family, we would respectfully pull our kids out and homeschool, even though we have high education and it is a personal sacrifice to our entire family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and expressing your concerns. I, for one, have heard what you have said, have asked of us, and certainly I think all of us can echo the same sentiments, and we'll take that and discuss it and see where we go from here. But I appreciate your time this evening and conveying the message to us and your concerns, and we'll advise as far as what direction we take. Thank you. With that, I think the last item on the agenda this evening is, in the packet, we have our scheduled upcoming meetings and events. The next regular board meeting will be on December 16th. This meeting will take place at 7:00 PM, but at Harris Hill Elementary, where we will meet with Principal Aldrich prior to that meeting. There's no other questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the evaluation of a particular employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.